So I'm gonna ask council to, I'll start with District One and to say their name and their district. And we'll use that as the roll call as well. So I'll start with councillor Poyet.
Alfr Poyet, District One, Pleasant Bay, Mead Cove and Shetty Camp.
And I'm councillor for District Two, Laurie Gren, councillor and warden. And I have the Margery area and down to Granite Ang and also up through Southwest Margery towards Lake Gainesley. So that's my district. And District Three?
District Three, Deputy Warden Boom, Councilor and Councillor for Inverness, which takes in just about, down to Wigan to Glendale.
And District Four?
District Four, councillor John McLeod, in the suburb of Cogginaway, Cabal River Dennis, Aberdeen, Bill and Gainesley.
District? District Five?
District Five, Lindtism and I'm Portwood, Mabell and Arius.
And District Six?
District Six, Captain Gillis, and I take into geographically, Judd, Pregness, Metroy, Port Hastings, Glendale, West Bay Road, West Bay, Robert Mountain.
Thank you councillors and deputy warden. Before we go into the meeting, I just want to go over a little bit of information for your, for everybody here so you'll understand how this process will work. The planning staff at Eastern District Planning Commission provided amendment to the council dated October 27th, 2020, recommending the council hold a public hearing following the Shetty Camp area advisory committee's motion to request the removal of campgrounds as a permitted use in residential rural zone R1 zone. This proposed change requires amendments to both the Shetty Camp municipal planning strategy and the Shetty Camp land use bylaw. Mr. John Bain, Director of Eastern District Planning Commission, is present at this public hearing and following this introduction, I'll ask him to review that memo. At the regular meeting of council held on November 12th, 2020, council made the following motion. The council approved the first reading of the proposed amendment to the Shetty Camp municipal strategy and land use bylaw to remove campgrounds as a permitted use. The Municipal Government Act requires that an amendment to the land use bylaw must be read twice. Before the second reading, council must hold a public hearing on the proposed amendment. The second reading of the amendments must not occur until council has considered any submissions made or received at the public meeting or hearing. Today is the public hearing on these proposed amendments. Council will consider the written submissions that have been provided as well as those made at the hearing today. Council will not consider any submissions made or submitted after this public hearing. No decision on the proposed amendments will be made by council today. At the end of today's meeting, as a final agenda item, council will choose to, the date where a decision on this matter will be made. So that's the process that we'll be following and that's a direction. So I'm now gonna call on Eastern District Planning Staff, John Bain, for his report on the removal of campgrounds as a permitted use within residential R1 zone throughout the Shetty Camp plan. John, you have the floor.
Thank you, warden. I guess I'll take this mic. So as the wardens pointed out, the amendment before council this evening, this afternoon, for the public hearing, deals with simply removing campgrounds as a permitted use in the municipal planning strategy and in the land use bylaw. So it's a plan amendment and a zone amendment. So council is completely, it's completely within council's discretion to amend your bylaws. This is not something that's an appealable decision. If you do make the decision to amend your bylaw, then that goes to the province for ministerial approval. But if you decide not to change the bylaw, to just leave it the way it is, any decision council makes either in favor of or against is not an appealable decision. It would just go to the province for approval. We have received a number of phone calls on the issue. And one of the concerns that was raised was with respect to existing campgrounds if the amendment is made. And so for, it's important for council to be aware that the intent of this is as a temporary measure so that we could then take a deeper dive on the whole issue of campgrounds and that type of tourist development. So it's really just putting a pause on that type of development so that it can be addressed more, in more detail. The other concern that was raised is that some people saw that there were two staff reports on our webpage. And the second staff report, which has different options, is not what's being considered this afternoon. The only thing that's being considered this afternoon is that removal of campgrounds from your plan and bylaw. So as far as existing campgrounds are concerned, they would continue to function as a legal non-conforming use. And then our intent is to come back and take a look at how to accommodate those in a more, you know, a detailed manner, looking at some of the options that we had presented in the other staff report. So that's all I have. This public hearing was advertised in accordance with the requirements of the Municipal Government Act. We did receive a number of written submissions. Those written submissions are in your package. There were some that were received late last night and early this morning. So they may or may not be in your packages yet, but they will be before you're, before you make a decision on this, on this issue. So if council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions from council? Before we go any further, something I failed to do was to tell everybody to keep your masks on. We have a public coming in here. If you're speaking and you can speak through the mask, that's fine, that's better. But if you need to take it off to speak, that's okay as well. But otherwise, I ask that everybody keep their mask on and maintain the social distancing that's required to keep us all safe. So from the COVID pandemic. So we have 10 presenters. And I'll call the first one. As our CAO said earlier, we're trying to keep these to five minutes. If you get very far over that, I will have to call you on it. But we want to keep, we have quite a few presentations, so we want to keep them precise. And if you have written information you want to leave with us as well, feel free to do that. And I think most of these presentations, if not all, are on Zoom. So we have a screen over to my left here set up. And the first person to present is John Allen, the co-ordinator. John, you have the floor. We may have to tweak this a little bit. Can everybody hear me? We're having a problem with sound, so I don't know if my voice is talking very well. Can you hear me?
Talking well.
Great, okay. So my, my position on this is very simple. With an unregulated campground use in our community, R1 residential, we are not advancing the interests of promoting tourism. We are not maintaining the stated goals in the Shetty Camp municipal planning strategy, which is what founds the use of the bylaw uses. Because it doesn't encourage orderly growth and it does not take into consideration the land use in a manner that will preserve and enhance and protect both the natural and man-made environments of the community. The Waves End campsite, which of course is going to have to go through, but we're trying to prevent more of those from showing up or cropping up, is going to have 129 sites in the strip of land that borders onto the Capit Trail and is going to look like a parking lot. If more of these types of campgrounds are going to be permitted without taking into consideration the adverse impact on the residents and bear in mind, this is a residential community even though we're rural. If we do not protect against unregulated and untraveled use of the lands for campgrounds, then we're not going to be able to bring more tourists into the neighborhood. The gateway to the national park, which is one of the stated goals of protection, is not something that is going to be well thought out. The other problem is that the traffic that's going to be created along the main highway is going to be a danger to the community. So my, my points are this. In order to be able to encourage and preserve the architectural and cultural heritage of Shetty Camp and to minimize the negative impact that may result from any new developments, and I emphasize that this is to protect against new developments, it is imperative that we have, A, a moratorium on any other permitted uses until there is a bylaw in place that can deal with regulated use of campgrounds and their associated uses. That is something that I understand will follow the present proposal, which is to put in, to place a moratorium. And I think that it is in everyone's interest that we recognize that what we're trying to do is preserve our ability to continue to promote tourism while at the same time protecting the natural beauty of our Capit Trail. When you see advertisements promoting the Capit Trail and Cape Breton, you don't see photos or movie clips of campgrounds. What you see is a beautiful highway that leads to the Highlands Park. And to have campgrounds being able to be dotted through on the way to the campgrounds, or sorry, to the park, is not something that is in our interest. It has become very distressing for people who are abutting this current Waves End park, which of course we can't do anything about because our bylaws are woefully inadequate to be able to deal with. So in order to protect against any further use of the loopholes and the unregulated use of campgrounds for our community, it is imperative, and I urge this with all my heart, that we have a moratorium in place until we can properly deal with where these campgrounds should be placed and how they should be used. Those are my submissions and my thoughts on it. I could go on ad nauseam and continue, but basically nutshell, that's my stated goal for my talk today. Thank you. Thank you, John, and you were right on time with that, so I appreciate that. And we'll take those things into consideration for sure. Okay, next person on the list is Taeab Burke. Do I have that pronounced right? You have, you're up next.
Can everybody hear me? Good?
Good.
So I just wanted to voice my opinion and concern also with the conversations that are going around about a campground being built. And I just wanted to make it clear that although there is a huge interest in shutting down a lot of the campground development or stopping any more, I think it's important to make sure that we're creating a welcoming environment where more citizens can come through to accommodate more tourists coming to the area. So I just wanted to make sure that we're trying carefully and we're not discouraging more development in the area because that's what we want to see. We want to see more growth and more young families coming to the area to try and start businesses. Like my family that came here to try and start a business. And so, you know, saying that we just want to shut everything down and then not have any more campground development is not really the best way forward. I understand that we need to, some regulations to be placed, make sure that, you know, we're not going overboard. But, you know, we can't just completely shut down either.
Is that it? Is it done there? Okay. Thank you, Tara. Ta- Taeab, I should say. And next person is Kevin Kamis. Kevin, you have the floor.
Kevin, it's to be added. You can go ahead. Kevin Martin-Tu? Yeah, let's move on. I'm in on combat.
Okay, yep. Okay, the next person is Martin Chessa.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Rosi Baku. My name is Batens Chessa. I was born and raised in Montezo, right on the Capit Trail Road. And about four years ago, I built a house still on Capit Trail Road in Point Cross at 12241 Point Cross. And I'm here to support the moratorium, and here's why. I really feel, and Taeab's point about the stuff, shut everything down, I couldn't agree more. I think this is a conversation about how can we remain pro campground development while not interfering with the incredible, incredible source of scenery and beauty that the Capit Trail is offering to people from across the entire world. And I'm very optimistic that we can accomplish both, pro campground development, pro beautiful natural scenery for two reasons. Number one, Inverness County has done this before. And number two, we can learn from other beautiful communities and villages elsewhere on the planet who have figured out how to balance both. So let me explain what I mean by both of my comments. So first one about Inverness County, having done this before. My research, and don't hold me to the exact number, but it would appear that we have about 20 campground in the vicinity of Inverness County. I suspect a few of them probably are in Victoria as well, but somewhere on the Capit Trail. And I looked, you know, 20 campground, that's a lot. And my expectation is that from the hundreds of times I've toured the trail, I don't remember any of them really posing or interfering with the natural beauty of the trail. Yet some of them have been around for 50-plus years. So the people who built them, I give them credit and I also give credit to some of the planning commission people who must have worked with them who say, hey, you can build this campground, which is an essential service if you're going to have tourists. But we can avoid putting them in a place that will diminish the beauty. So to the planning people, if you've been involved in that, congratulations. I suspect that a lot of the development though has happened because of good luck. Because the number of these places around the trail do not have bylaws that would have guided people as to where to put their campground. And unfortunately, last year, as Monsieur Quan mentioned, a bit of our good luck ran out. And we're here today because we're saying, okay, we adjust. But the fact that 20 campgrounds already in over 50 years have been built without interfering gives me great optimism that with a few guidelines, well thought out, collaboration with the community, we can achieve both. And my second reason for being optimistic is looking at places around the world. I'll tell you a quick story that carved the COVID. I had the good fortune of visiting this small village that has 3,800 people, has incredible coastline beauty and has a world-class golf course at its doorstep. Now you may think he's talking about Margery or Inverness or Portwood or Shetty Ganga, where is he talking about? You're right, although the average temperature of this place year-round is 19 degrees Celsius. What I'm talking about is a quaint village called Carnell by the Sea in Monterey County, California. It couldn't be further away from us, right? But what do they have? They have what's called the 17-mile drive, which is a coastal drive that brings you to the community. We have the Capit Trail, which is 185 miles. They have the number one public golf course on the Ustall Pebble Beach. We have that. Guess what? Their beauty with the 17-mile drive and with Pebble is no better than our beauty with Capit Trail and Capit Cliff and the Bay. I was having breakfast the final day I was there, and the gentleman who served us, I asked him, how long have you lived here? He said, over 20 years. I said, you must have seen lots of change in 20 years. He said, not really. That's the way we like it. Well, that's interesting. I said, why do you say that? He applauded the government official for resisting the temptation of allowing commercial development to take over the coastline of Carnell. And just remember this, Carnell is less than two hours from one of the wealthiest cities in the world, of San Francisco. And it also welcomes over four million visitors every year. No associate of the laws, thus those two and a half. So to put it in perspective, can you imagine how tempting it was to put commercial development right on the 17-mile drive? What they did instead is worked with the community, they remained pro-development, and they had bylaws where if you wish to camp, and I want to put all of you to Google camping in Monterey County or camping in Carnell, you will see tons of campground. Nowhere in sight of the beauty that brings the people there in the first place. So in summary, we've done it before in Inverness, done it 22 times or so. We can do it again with a few guidelines. And if Carnell by the Sea has resisted the temptation of all the money they could have picked up with all the other tourists, and they just said, slow down, we will devise the guidelines that can allow development and maintain the beauty. If they develop, we can make sure that we do it as well. And what I loved about this gentleman's quote, he said, you know, the local government officials made sure that no one was going to muck up our beautiful scenery. And I hope together, that's what we'll do with the Capit Trail and beautiful scenery devised. Thank you, Rosi.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation and we'll certainly take that into consideration. Thank you. Has Kevin joined us there yet or do we want to just move on? Yeah, we should, I think we'll move on to the next one again and see if we can pick up Kevin at the end. Okay. So the next person is Benny Anne Carmier.
Benny Anne?
I don't think we have Benny Anne on at the moment.
No, I don't think so.
So we'll keep on down the list. Okay. Tom Devoe. Devoe, I should say.
Who was there? Devoe? Devoe? Can you hear me? Wait. Can you hear me? Good. Yeah. Good afternoon, all the community and all the participants in this meeting. If you don't know me, my name is Tom Devoe. My wife and I have lived in Palm Springs and we have three properties and two houses in Palm Springs. I have paid taxes on these properties for over 40 years and my ancestors have lived here well over 100 years. Our intention today, since the beginning, was not to create confrontation or animosity in the community, but rather discuss differences of opinions in a sensible manner. When that is in life, there's no, there are no guidelines. People tend to do whatever they want. And this leads to differences of opinions and most times arguments. This is why bylaws are a solution to resolve these problems. The setting up clear guidelines establishes set boundaries and then makes immunity disagreements. In the past, most changes were school-based, especially outside check and follow-up. But these last few years have changed things. We now see the importance of zoning bylaws regarding unrestricted commercial development beside our mostly residential projects. Without bylaws, anyone can do whatever they want without their neighbors' rightful public hearing. A bulldozer can come in the house one morning and start building. It's the same impact or damage that you're saying. This reality seemed apparent until the O'Neill and Briscoe family found themselves neighbors who 130 trailer apart campground on their doorstep due to non-existent bylaws. These two families are now left holding the bag. They have been great neighbors and paid taxes for many years only to face them a certain future. All here would like to wake up with the same thing happening to them. Another example that was mentioned in the last meeting was that about a pharmaceutical company that wanted to set up a company in Long Island. Their financial investors voted against it due to lack of sufficient bylaws. Their issue was anyone could build whatever they wanted beside them and potentially compromise their investment. A proper campground development that was Shetty Camp Beach. It has great access for tourists with potty tenders near the beach and proper tree coverage between trailers. There, they are away from the Capit Trail but have close access to water, nature, peace, the Capit Trail, Fettycamp and the National Park as well. Speaking of which, Cape Breton Highlands National Park has loans of energy and now are increasing the amount of facilities tourists add to camp in that are reaching. The other point is our jobs. I'm sure someone would argue that these would create jobs in our depressed area. I beg to differ. We had four years needed to bring in migrant workers in order to fill vacancies in fishing and tourism sector, just to name a few. These are the working people, very natural and out of the future of our aging community. These are the working people who are at it and are the future of our aging community. We hope to see many more people from abroad within our aging population and fill our job opportunity. I will end in this. We have the same goal in trying to achieve what's best for our community. As far as increased tourism and growing our economic future, there are good and bad in doing that. We need to do these with as little impact and influence as possible and in the right locations to wait for the Cabot Trail. These new bylaws are necessary to see our food prosper in the next generation, live and enjoy Cabot Trail of beauty and its renown, and its renown all over the world. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Claude. Okay, um, next person up is Kevin McKeown.
Kevin McKeown, are you there? Kevin? Any Kevin? Okay.
Has Kevin came to say that?
I don't know, I don't think Kevin came in.
And Dave's Kevin.
Okay.
Hold on the next one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Brenda Roach.
Brenda?
Bonjour, good afternoon, everyone. I am here in Toronto. I have been a taxpayer here since over forty years, a proud one. I have to say that I'm here more or less as a spectator, but at the same time with my goals and dreams of returning home. I am rated as an RR1. I had the pleasure of having a discussion with, uh, one of your people in attendance, one of your speakers today, and I have to say that, um, I am for the growth. I am for open opportunities. I am not here to, and like Claude, I'm not here to create any animosity. I do believe that we need to use the condition for a better tomorrow. I don't believe in having several campgrounds being opened on the main drive, nor, uh, in other areas. Yet by saying open, I strongly believe that we, uh, we need to have some guidelines to some extent. Having said that, uh, we are still, in my case, it's grandfathered, there's much that can be done on the land that I have, and I'm blessed to hear that. I would not want that to be taken away, because one day I am returning, God willing, with a few intentions in mind. So as I said, I'm here more or less as a spectator, um, listening to everybody with their opinions and your input, highly, highly appreciated. And, um, we'll go with the flow, and at the same time, uh, always for a better tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Okay. Next up is Paul Strom.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Paul Strom, and, um, I've lived here for quite a number of years with my wife and man, and, um, I believe that there's a number of things that come into play in regards to this whole issue, and I'm cockling them already when I mention them. Um, one of them is that the municipal government has mandated that every municipal council in Nova Scotia has to update their bylaws within the next two years, for, that's my understanding. And I totally agree with what's been said before, is that the bylaws that are in place in Inverness County have needed to be updated for decades, um, and in many, many ways. Why are bylaws important and necessary? Well, uh, Monten and Alan, everybody on the line, spoke to that exact point earlier. Failing the plan is planning to fail, and that's what can be more important as a climate emergency agreement. Bylaws enable us as a community to plan for our collective health and welfare. They're meant to enable citizens within the community to voice their opinion about issues of concern. Now, while consensus is mutually preferred, it's really important for us to respect each other's opinion and come up with a logical, reasonable plan, and that's where bylaws come in. And they're important for every community in order to demonstrate respect for everyone who lives or visits. Everyone has a right to a healthy environment, and that pertains to this issue, because many people, um, you know, in every, whether or not they're a visitor or whether or not they're a landlord here, it's our environment here that's really important. And environment includes, uh, mental health as well, and that's been spoken to. Uh, but how would you like to have, you know, a property beside you, all of a sudden be turned into something that you do not look to see and that the community views visibly as a deterrent rather than an attraction? Okay? The climate emergency needs to be taken into account of this bylaw because of the location of the property in question. There are shorelines, and shoreline properties are very special from numerous perspectives, and they should be protected from commercial development. I don't know if you know this or not, but ninety percent of Inverness County shoreline properties are now owned by people outside of Canada. So, uh, when I did, uh, I've been involved in recreational leadership for a long time, along with the environmental movement and social activism. So I spent a few hours doing my research about some of the things that I've noticed across Canada, and I've lived in or traveled to every province and every territory in Canada, and I have seen hundreds or thousands of RV parks or campgrounds. So, you know, I found this comment from, uh, one of the sites, and it said, how many used to pass RV parks, and you remarked on how crowded and unnatural they look. We could not imagine ourselves staying in RV parks, and we naturally assume that if you want to avoid RV parks, you should not own an RV. Well, an RV park is considered to be part of the hospitality industry and is therefore considered commercial. So in looking, you know, at, uh, at a number of different RV sites, um, there's a whole list of things that people that use RV parks want to see. So they want to be separate from other residential and commercial developments. They, the area should be large enough to have whole foods for their children, and adequate breathing space between the units, so that people that are in those units, you know, have space to do different things. Shade trees are a must. When I, when I read that, I was, I couldn't help it, I broke up laughing, because there are no shade trees whatsoever in this area in particular. But what it does is it speaks to those areas where RV people want to be away from the community, and they want to have shade trees, large streets between the units with no speed bumps. So, you know, a common swimming pool is a significant determinant factor. The area should feel like a community rather than a parking lot. That phrase, parking lot, was, you know, named earlier, and that's exactly what it looks like right now. Rules and regulations regarding exceptions to use public intoxication visitors, noise per se terms like generators coming must be enforced, whether by the owner or the police. Now, where are those bylaws here in Inverness County? I've been looking. So surprisingly enough, RV parks also, in many, many places, have what's called a ten-year rule, so that if your RV is ten years or older, then many parks won't let you in, because there'd be, you know, to be weathered or warm. So access to Wi-Fi is another, clean, warm bathrooms with lots of hot water. Okay, now this side, where are you going to get enough hot water, you know, and handle all of the sewage that's involved, and you are right beside the ocean? Where is this going to go? Right? Laundry facilities with commercial-sized washers and dryers, picnic tables for each lot. Now, notice that we're not talking about fire pits, okay? And that's an important thing, because many RV parks don't want fires in there because of their neighbors. They don't want the smell of smoke, you know, or what it does to their kids, or anyway. Generous terms with complete full disclosure, as an example. Great staff that are courteous, knowledgeable, and informed. And that's what I think most Cabelet owners are, you know? Most of us are, you know, are courteous, knowledgeable, and informed, and what we want is we want reasonable, intelligent, uh, bylaws, you know, that are put together, you know, by all of us collectively participating, you know, in a good way. Thank you so much. Oh, sorry, I have one, one more thing here. I read up on the Inverness bylaw regarding fracking, and it was interesting. And in paragraph ten, right down to the words at the bottom, the last quote says, uh, you know, in regards to fracking, and I think many of you would know that, but it says, provide that in a prosecution of violation of a bylaw, evidence that one neighbor who's disturbed is trying to face it, evidence that the neighborhood is disturbed. So, you know, is it, is it disturbed? Anyway, it makes a question, you know, if we have, you know, people who are upset with this, yeah, I think that we need to come together and, you know, look towards our future with this. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Um, next on the, um, presentations is Mr. R. Roach. And that was one of the last ones put on the day.
Mr. Roach? Or Kevin McKeown?
That's too long, Kevin? Was that presentation too long?
No.
No?
But you can stay muted now, thank you, Paul. Um, Kevin McKeown sent a message saying he's on a job site with Greek service who's listening, but we'll be commenting, and I don't see anybody else.
You may want to pass it on to Kevin, that if he wants to submit a written proposal on the end of the day, if he wants to make any comments, he could do that, too. So everybody's presented that, yes?
I didn't get it right. I didn't get completely with, uh, what does that mean with Kevin McKeown?
He's on a job site, he can't.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a week in the next.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to have the message so that he can submit it in writing, and that would still allow him to get his opinions out there. Um, and Betty Ann Carmier, we missed, and Kevin, no, uh, yeah.
Yeah, Kevin McKeown and Brenda Roach.
Yeah. So we, I just want to make sure that it's not a technical thing on their, on their Zoom meeting that is causing this, we can double-check there, just to make sure they're not sitting in a limbo there with a technical problem we might give the open mic.
I think that's everybody.
Is that okay? Okay. The next item on our agenda is any questions from council?
Oh, sorry. Uh, there may be some presenters.
Always there are presenters, yeah. Any other presenters in the room? Yes, sure. Five minutes is limited, but you can have a mic there and you have a bar. Maybe introduce yourself.
And am I able to take my mask off here?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, I'm just going to introduce myself for people that don't know who I am. My name is Lucille Timmons. I am owner of Cabelet Vacation, Cabot Trail Vacation, sorry, RV cottages in Point Cross. Um, we have two RV cottages on our property. I'm also, uh, a member on the Advisory Planning Commission Committee. Um, and I work, uh, as a Community Economic Development Officer for CIDIN8, which is a development economic, um, community for the Acadian communities in Nova Scotia. So, um, my background, the reason why that I was chosen to sit on the advisory committee is in community economic development, local tourism development, uh, tourism accommodation owner, myself, and I am a resident of Shetty Camp, born and raised, all my ancestors are here. My maiden name is Alarad. So, um, I've been following the comments, complaints very closely from the onset of the first complaint to Eastern District Planning Commission about the campground Point Cross. I have also done some research, research on campgrounds in residential areas, and none of them have had any of these complaints that had been brought forth. I have also worked with most tourism accommodation owners throughout the Cabot Trail for the past ten years as facade and streetscape program coordinator, and have had many, many chats about how business was going and if there were any complaints from neighbors. Most, if not all, of the complaints did not come from in and around campgrounds. They came mostly from other types of accommodations, restaurants, bars, et cetera. The major complaints that I heard at our previous planning advisory committee are not due to location of the campgrounds, but more of the aesthetics, noise, slow-moving traffic pulling in and out of the campgrounds on the main Cabot Trail, uh, which would make it dangerous, and also campfire smoke. I don't believe that any of these complaints warrant placing tougher restrictions on new campground development, uh, locations. All that would do is hinder new development in our beautiful Shetty Camp region. There has and always will be some form of complaints with any new development. For example, helicopter tours. We just recently started, um, we have a landing pad, um, just in Pretoria, Tang. Uh, they started wonderful helicopter tours for our tourists and our locals, and Facebook blew up with complaints about all this helicopter noise over. So also, another, um, development lately is the development of the Jitsa Mines, um, which is a beautiful locals-only, uh, area. Um, we've been promoting it, and now there's garbage everywhere, um, there's a lot of traffic on the side of the roads. Um, so these complaints are warranted, and they are, uh, an item that needs to be faced. However, if we would say, well, we don't like the helicopter noise, so no, there's not going to be any more helicopter tours, we can't have that, they can go elsewhere. Um, for any other issues, as environmental, sewage, water, et cetera, et cetera, there are governmental agencies that are experts and are paid well to deal with these issues. I believe a good option, maybe a happy medium to this controversy, would be to keep the campground bylaw as is with the addition of a design aesthetic beautification guidelines regulations. Similar structure to, structure to the guidelines I had developed for the Cabot Trail Facade and Streetscape Program Phase Two back in two thousand and sixteen. Each new campground development would have to present their design conceptual plan to the Planning Advisory Committee or Eastern District Planning Commission for approval before starting, so then they could make certain adjustments or whatever. These guidelines could deal with issues such as signage, lighting, aesthetics, beautification of the property that's supposed to be developed, landscaping, spacing within camp sites, et cetera, et cetera. Most of these issues were mentioned here before by other present, presenters. Um, one more note, um, if council decides that they approve these proposed changes to the campground bylaw, then these changes should be implemented throughout Inverness County and not just the region of Shetty Camp. It would be unfair and would cause future developers to go anywhere but our region for these reasons, reasons of changing the bylaws in just this Shetty Camp region. Why would it not be, if you're changing these bylaws, they should pertain to all of Inverness County or even Richmond County as well, all that pertain to the Cabot Trail, our beautiful Cabot Trail. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other presentations from the floor? One more time, any other presentations from the floor? Any other written submissions to come forward? No? Okay, if not, um, you have till the end, anybody has till the end of the day to submit a written submission? Are there any questions from council members?
I have one for you, Gordon.
What time today for people that want to get their letters sent? Like, there must be a time.
I'll ask Debbie, if we go to Debbie Nicholson here.
The end of business for?
The end of business?
Four o'clock today?
Four o'clock today? Okay, just thought we stated that, and it's what time?
Counselor Chisholm?
I just have one question for Lucille. Is your presentation, is that, have you sent that to council, or is it just?
I've sent that to John, Alfred, and Dee.
Right, thank you.
Any chance you can send it to Debbie? Yes, thank you.
I think forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or counsels?
Yeah, well, first of all, I would like to thank everybody here today, especially the sponsors. You know, there's different issues, you know? One issue that I thought that was never mentioned was the economy, the impact that it has to, it has on our community, and also different issues. But I will be looking at both issues, you know, both frozen counts, you know, about the situation, and I want to thank Lucille, the president, also here, excuse me. And the decision, like we said, will be made accordingly in the next few weeks, and at that point, I will have, whatever it is decided, I will have a full report on my part to my community and to the county also. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Few comments. You know, this RV park, you know, we have four of them, this is four. That's why I call it a, but one thing we have, and two of them, aims to be one down the portage road, also we have a provincial park. And I was asked to check from the owners and the neighbors and around each park, find out about noise, about whatever you wanted to know. And the people in the areas were saying, you wouldn't, you really wouldn't know the trailer park is there unless you've seen the trailers. And, you know, they're all kept clean, and like Ms. Timmons said, there's several, some regulations from the provincial government on water and sewer. But, and on the other hand, it is a tourist industry, and you have to look at the fact that these people would come to the areas, they spend a lot of money on food, groceries, gas, and et cetera. So, that's one reason. Then as far as the noise factor, I asked each owner, usually nine, twelve, it's all over, you know, they're bed, and as far as traffic goes, these people are on vacation, they don't leave at seven in the morning, they're playing their repairs going on the road. It's their vacation, they usually walk. So, that's my opinion on it, and I know our decision will be difficult, and we're going to make some people less happy than others. So, that's my thought on the trailer parks.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, RV parks, sure.
Thank you, Counselor McLennan. Any other questions or comments?
I'm just showing up late others. I'm sorry, my name is Ron Roach, I was reserved to be here today, but I'm only making it in and out.
Are you here to make your presentation?
I haven't even heard anything that's been on, but yes, I have concerns greatly about
You want to come over to the mic, Kevin?
All right, my name is Apollo Glenn Roach. I am a citizen of Shetty Camp. I was born and raised there, Shetty Camp. I have concerns about a lot of things, that's why I guess I'm late. The R1 Zone, I believe, is a recreation campground and golf course. And being in the industry, in the recreation, it's a wonderful world. And where we're coming into with the brand-new world with the COVID, the recreation is greatly developing vastly, a lot of people living off-grid, venturing things in life. By removing or implementing new legislation or rules, sanctions, bylaws in the backroads of Shetty Camp, I oppose it only for this reason. There is not enough substantial area for the millions of tourists that we welcome and cherish, champion of our beautiful island. Where are they going to go? We all know it's developing, recreation, off-grid, tiny homes, buildings, recycling of sea cans. If it's removed by having campgrounds in our backroads in Inverness County and elsewheres, you're going to tamper and you're going to affect our economy in our villages. Everybody profits from it, everyone, restaurants, gas stations, co-op, everybody, propane. You meet and greet, it's COVID-friendly, there's distancing. There's a big, huge demand for RV services. I am one to start that this spring or fall or summer. I'm hoping that'll work. The next service deck is in Vador, so. Sales, trailer park. We have places all over Inverness County that we are, we come from fishing villages. Boats are parked everywhere, it's wide open. We don't hear anything that the wind tears it down. We have bragging rights with our winds. We know how to build houses, roofs. We can sustain or come to agreeance, and by the way, we are much better than what you see in Shetty Camp, all right? I'm ashamed of this place. I'll get to it after. We need to come together and come up with a solution where recreation, working with the national park, and all the wonderful businesses, and the new people who are venturing into this, Scott McPherson, good friend of mine, I tip my hat for this guy. He's a resident of Shetty Camp. Couple of years back, I would have never dreamed Scott would have been doing what he's doing today, holding. So, and I wish him all the best. I know within 20 days that place is going to be packed. So, him and his partner, I welcome him to our beautiful town here. And it's unfortunately that we have to go, or some of them, we got to go to earn a living elsewheres where their heart and soul is right here where we stand. When I say I'm ashamed of this place, it's not because of what it can't offer, it's the negligence of whatever it is. At 51 years old, I'm stained, I'm sorry, but living in the backroads, this is a mistake. As soon as I step on the backroads of Shetty Camp, folks, is it Shetty Camp, or is it Shetty Camp Backroads, or is it Bell Marshall where I come from? There's a GPS that when you put Shetty Camp, it takes you to the backroads. Tourists are confused. They've stopped and asked me, where's Shetty Camp? Where's the Jitsa Mine? So, we need to advertise and fix that. I talked to Mr. Alfred Arturo here, July, we had an issue. He said it's going to cost $250,000, maybe to change it, and I know, but it's, it is what it is. So, that's a boo-boo, but yet a brilliant marketing strategy when it comes to advertising. The flow in Shetty Camp backroads has never been so high in demand, and it's not just because of the national park, it ain't go nowhere. It's the beautiful little hole, three minutes from my home, which is called the Jitsa Mine. That is the nugget of what's going to bring people more into this town as well as the national park.
Just to like to stop you there. Everybody's got five minutes, so you're.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so you've got.
Is there any we got initial, I don't know, I know Kevin Kuhn broke down, so I'm.
You've got a couple of minutes left.
Couple of minutes, so let's come together and fix this place, all right? We have to. The boardwalk, there's a lot of things to talk about, but the Shetty Camp backroads, you can't ruin it. We have a beautiful place, and we have to come together, all businesses too. We can do better, and I don't want no walls recreated, so I'm going to be neutral, but I hope to God that whatever decision be made, it doesn't take away my little dreams that I've been working on for 25 years, because I worked hard for it. And I got to get off of this system I'm on, because I'm much more worthy than where I am. So, I am going to work my ass off very shortly, because I did get reported from Eastern District Planning Committee regarding my area residence, land, an eyesore, but I'm a man of recyclable things. I fix things, and I bring things that are garbage back to life. And if I have to get rid of things that I've been doing for all my life, I will. I'm here to work together, but I have to develop my own little niche in my own backyard in Shetty Camp, and I just don't want problems more than what I'm getting, where I'm going with this. Thank you very much for your time. I'm sorry to be late. I hope that I represented myself well. I didn't swear. That's a good thing, all right? God bless, be well.
Thank you, Ben.
I did well.
Good job. Okay, anybody else? I'll call one more time. Nobody else in the room? Okay, next, the date of our next meeting, oh, sorry, I didn't realize you wanted to.
I just wanted to thank all of those that presented, either via Zoom or written or in person, all very passionate, and we heard you. But I also want to thank Shetty Camp for hosting us today. It was great to come to Shetty Camp, and we didn't get blown away, so it was great. Both way by the hospitality.
Absolutely, right? And I'll echo that as well as Warden, and we always have to be a little nervous when we talk about getting blown away when we hear, we've got a breeze in our community, 100 clout an hour wind. Alfred looks at us and says, that's just a little puff down at Shetty Camp, so we've got no big winds today, but you guys have certainly had your share lately. And like Glenn said, you know how to construct your roofs and your houses, and in many cases, those winds that would probably rip most communities apart, keep you guys all safe and sound here because of your good work. And I thank the community of Shetty Camp for hosting us today as well, and hopefully we can do you justice when we review this, and we have the best interest in the community in mind and the municipality, and we'll do our best to give our best judgment on this. So, having said that, we will.
Next meeting?
Next meeting. This will be the meeting that this will be, and all meetings of council, I must say, are public. You don't have an opportunity to speak at a council meeting unless you're on the agenda, but if people want to attend the next meeting, if this is where it's going to be discussed, everybody's, the only thing we have to be cautious there is COVID, the number of people, so that could be, requires to limit the number of people, so we may have, if we expect a large crowd, we may have people registered till we fill the facility with what we are allowed for people, so. Would we, I'll look at doing this at our next council meeting, probably, I would think. And our next council meeting is March 4th, and it's a little bit different this time, which may be a good thing for those who want to attend. It's going to be at 6:00 PM at Council Chambers on the second floor of the municipal building in Portwood. So, it'll be at 6:00 PM, and we'll be, we're doing that because we have some organizations that can't be there with us during the business hours to make presentations, not on this matter, but on other matters, so we'll be hearing from them as well at that time. So, 6:00 PM, March 4th, at the municipal building, second floor, Council Chambers. Any questions to that? So, that'll be the next meeting. And with that, I'll ask for a motion from council to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Deputy Warden Ford, second to John McLennan. Thank you, everybody, for coming and your attention today, it'll be very important items. And we'll be in touch.